Mayor and Board.
Sorry about that, everyone.
First, our first meeting was back in January with the community. That's what we had. This meeting, to be honest, this is a fun thing. There are great categories. I think it's kind of more for the channel of events. Our future is the time we're doing the final for the summary of finances related to revenue with the country. The get to them. And then as the board had asked, have each department do, you know, contribute a couple of things. One, their vision statement for each department. The concept they made sense last month. The top three budget requests and the division team that we plan to do now. And they're learning how to be a part of that next new pack. Thirdly, you know, come up and make it our case study. That again, my friends, and then ten, there's going to be a couple of these that are coming about how many you do. So that's four of the comments. If I want to buy, John, come on, John, where do you want? Do you want to?
I don't want to leave the room, but.
My plan is to make that better.
So, uh, the first page that's will be a summary. So, uh, we amended budget for this term here with twelve point four million. Uh, the proposed in front of you, uh, revenue of thirteen and a half million expenditures of, uh, also thirteen and a half, uh, millions. Uh, right now we're forty one thousand to the good. All right. Uh, the next page, this is just all our revenue and, uh, there's several that are highlighted. Uh, the first four, those are the, um, real estate and personal property taxes for the town. Uh, the next two are the, uh, personal and real estate taxes for the fire district. Um, both of those are heavily impacted by deconstruction and, uh, revaluation, which we'll get to in a second. Uh, sales tax, uh, that's the other major revenues. Um, we'll get that in the second, interest earned. Uh, we adopted a budget for current year three fifty, we meant that's a four hundred and fifty, that's what we had a year out of. Uh, next year, uh, we're going to be about two hundred and twenty five thousand for that. That's due to, uh, less, less idle cash and also a change at the, um, federal reserve rate. Uh, when we started this, this three years, like it was five, uh, and it's on a network trend to free enhance this. Uh, the one I've been wanting on the next page is, uh, the D C I reports. That's the new thing that police, uh, started doing earlier this year. Um, and that should bring in next year one hundred and eighty two thousand. Uh, so waste curve and pickup fees, uh, that's the other major revenue, uh, for, that's our part for recycling. Uh, we bought it in six thirty two, we should end the year at around seventy five, but in six forty next year. Uh, transfer from L P A, uh, the license agency, the cycle fund, uh, general fund. Last year, uh, current year, they said sixty four thousand, next year, uh, another sense of five thousand. Uh, reimburse water sewer fund, this current year, water sewer fund, reimbursement, general fund for certain expenses. Mainly, uh, Jack, uh, the stand and Jack H R, I had just, uh, shared classes and they were reimbursing us. And then appropriate amounts, uh, current year, we're at a million. And, uh, proposed budget is a pet euro. Um, the next page is, uh, this is, this is the summary of the fire pack valuation. Uh, it's a total valuation of, uh, six hundred and fifty seven million. Uh, this brings in, uh, this brings in, uh, this will bring in six hundred and seventy two thousand in fire district, actually for per, uh, for real estate and another seventy eight thousand for, um, for vehicles. So all together, um, all together, so. Um, and each one sent generate sixty two cents. We're at current, we're a, we're a twelve cent tax rate for fire, but the maximum fire district tax is fifteen cents. And revenue neutral for the fire district is nine cents. Uh, and it's set by the county, but we can give a recommendation. And which they put it all up. Um, the next one, that is town taxes. Um, so I think we went from, uh, about six hundred and eighty million dollars in valuation to, uh, just, uh, one point three five, uh, billion. Uh, about five hundred thousand of that is just wool speed. That's a, well, a large change left. Um, so last year we got, uh, three point two six five in real estate, uh, property taxes. This year we're using the same rate and the same question rate and the same question fee. We would be at six point seven million. Uh, for vehicles, it would be three hundred and forty three thousand. So each set on our tax rate was apparently fifty four and one hundred and thirty one thousand dollars. Uh, we also on our vehicles, uh, we charge a five dollar vehicle, uh, vehicle tax pay. Um, general statute allowed, if you, if you, uh, charge five dollars, you can use it for unrestricted purpose. Any amount over five dollars, um, must be set on streets. Um, and I don't know if you're aware of Pittsburgh, last year, uh, went from zero to thirty dollars on their tax fee. And that's paid at the time you get your sticker for your vehicle. And right now it generates about thirty thousand, uh, thirty thousand dollars and we have roughly six thousand parts in the, the pack. Next, next page. Um, next page, uh, the revenue neutral is just what tax rate gets you the exact same dollars that you got last year. Um, so in this case, uh, we had a total valuation of six hundred and eighty three, uh, a total upgrade value of six hundred and eighty three million. At a fifty four cent rate, that should have generated three point five, six two million. So in order to generate three five six two, that's on, just a straight revenue neutral will be twenty seven cents, which is exactly half. Uh, but, uh, on the next page, as I mentioned earlier, a, uh, large, uh, large portion of that increase is Wool Speed. Uh, Wool Speed's valuation increased, uh, three hundred and nine million on their real property and a hundred and twenty five million on their personal property. Uh, and so taking that out of consideration and just doing purely the revaluation, the revenue neutral for that would be forty cents. Uh, uh, next page, uh, you may recognize some of these objectives. And I'll be the one, um, so, uh, got the twenty fifteen asset value, the twenty twenty four asset value and the new twenty twenty five asset value for each property. Uh, and using a fifty four cent rate for the last, for all three of those years, uh, you come up with totals of sixty eight hundred dollars, sixty four hundred dollars and ninety, uh, five hundred dollars. Um, twenty fifteen and twenty twenty five, uh, just naturally there's a, uh, thirty four percent inflation. So in order to generate the same revenue, uh, control for inflation between twenty twenty five and twenty, uh, twenty fifteen and twenty twenty five, uh, it would need to be a fifty one and a half that rate. Um, the next page, uh, this is the summary of how, what kind of looks like the economic development of Wool Speed. So, uh, okay. Basically, it's ninety five percent of their incremental taxes, which is a one, it, it used to be valued at one point eight million. So that's the S A C of their increase is, uh, ninety five percent every day until we pay off the law pay. And at a fifty four cent rate and the estimated valuation that will, that will be until twenty thirty six. But in total from that, uh, after the adjustments, uh, sorry, after the, uh, incentive payments, it's a hundred and twenty six thousand dollars, uh, net to the town. Uh, and the next page, um, as I mentioned earlier, we have, uh, slightly reducing sales tax revenue. Uh, as you can see, I have twenty twenty through, twenty twenty through, uh, this current year. Uh, previously we were, had al- almost silly, silly growth, uh, but that, that came to an end this year. So next year going to be reducing, uh, our budgeted revenues for this from six point eight seven this year to just, uh, three point six even. That was a lot faster than I did. I thought, I thought, I thought I did. Sorry about that.
I know, yes. Yeah, Mayor, maybe it's up to be a road to heart, but. And they said it should be page eleven in the demo.
Mayor, you said you wanted to keep questions at the end for all presentations?
Yes, please. If you have no CEO, we're like, damn, we're commanding, we're managing.
And going for over, um, trees, moving around, power bill, sanitation and rock, that's the most. So first thing is the, you know, the other, the other works, uh, first thing on the table, I read that.
Yeah.
Three more. Um, we have a few, I think a lot of make a little highlight. Takes some time, we're, I'm probably where you're doing that. Are for here to consider new change in toilet divisions is one of the big ones we're proposing. That's, uh, a complete maintenance mechanic, I'd like to get him reclassified to a complete safety ladder. And a fellow works to absorb the ground, having a maintenance of, maintenance of parks and town properties along with it. And fellow work to absorb the, how to make this, uh, into going to help out with all the ground made looks for all the property. Thirteen fourteen, that's a nice little picture of our factory order requesting and a couple of those water requesting. Page fifteen. We've made, um, some numbers of little bit for the last year because we need the whole to be able to do some stuff with. Um, so that will be a bunch of, you know, scattered, I don't know, you have mine.
Don, they need to help us. Don and I've kind of, um, Dylan, we've all three worked together on that budget. So, um, one thing that we've looked at is we originally wanted to come to the board, um, with some major requests. But after, um, looking at, um, some maintenance and, um, we feel like the roof, the roof, the town hall roof was one of them. And it's a two hundred and fifty thousand, approximately two hundred and fifty thousand dollar expenditure. But, um, based on, um, some looking around and stuff, um, we feel we could spend five to ten thousand dollars on some ceiling on the roof. Um, and give it a another year or two, maybe possible three years of life. Um, one thing that we feel is more important at this, um, time is fixing the rotten fascia around the building. And, um, installing, um, commercial grade gutters. Currently the gutters that are on this building are residential. So they don't, um, allow the water to drain properly. So we have, still have some drainage issues in the basement. So we felt like, um, getting that caught up first and that doing that, um, was more, more obtainable. And then looking at different options for the roof, because the roof is, um, a synthetic clay material. And, um, again, we feel like it's got some life left in it. Um, some other.
John, what else do we?
Uh, so, uh, last year we budgeted two hundred and ninety three thousand in maintenance buildings. Uh, this year we have a, a budget of a hundred and seventeen thousand for maintenance on the various properties. Um, in that for town hall, library and airport, it's ten thousand for general repairs, twenty thousand for roof and also the drainage in the basement. The, the basement floods probably four or five times a year. Uh, and fifteen thousand for landscaping for, uh, the police and fi- uh, police and fire, just general repairs of five thousand. Um, for, uh, the, the seven oh one dogwood, uh, five thousand for flooring paint, HVAC repair, five thousand for Brian station stormwater repair that shop. And then for parks, uh, fifty two thousand nine hundred dollars for, uh, multitude of items. And then, um, in terms of capital, it would be, uh, fifteen thousand for town hall gutters, uh, twenty five K a year for the next three years for town hall windows. Uh, seventeen thousand five hundred for the, uh, to gravel the parking lot across the street from downtown automotive. Uh, fifteen thousand to partition finance and water billing since that's moving downstairs and creating four offices. And, uh, a hundred and fifty thousand for the, uh, current fire station, uh, sprinkler renovations. Thirty nine thousand for pickleball court at Paul Braxton. Uh, sixteen thousand for Paul Braxton Park handrails. Uh, a hundred and thirty five thousand for the, uh, bowling park bathroom and fifteen thousand dollars for a lawnmower.
How much was the bowling court bathroom?
One thirty five.
And if you also look at the bottom, John and I, and along with Dylan, we wanted to make sure that you note at the bottom, the capital outlay, those are one time, those aren't the current.
We've seen on the trees. Um, we kept in this, close to how we found it before. We added a, so I know how the board felt about the stormwater program. But we added twenty thousand in for supplies, just so we can do as much stuff in-house and talk with. Our department supply one a little bit, just because we need to fellow works utilities were kind of entangled with each other. And, you know, the utilities leaving, they're leaving a void of items and we, we need to kind of bulk this up. Um, power bill, page seventeen, one of the big ones on here is the two hundred and fifty thousand of heavy resurfacing. And my goal on that would be to target all the old, old utility pets that are, there's all these, we just put in the fix codes. And then do a bunch rejuvenating front ceiling, there's lots of other items. We're having to reconstruct the roads and do a lot of big major projects, but one big difference, I think, it fixes a bit of small things in the hospital. Eighteen, sanitation. Uh, one of the big changes put in that one is the salary. You've got one person where it's, uh, been taken out of power, we're pulling them in, please sanitation. We requested, I initially requested another double boom truck, um, for that one that's showing its age. And this will be able to survive another year, um, but that's going to be a, a big request for next year. So that one is not in here. Page nineteen, garage. That's the only real major push was the department supply boosting that up again. We need, we need more tools, any more stuff to go to work with it. There. Okay, for my, I'm pleased, I'm pleased.
Thank you, Mayor, for mentioning. I'm not sure how this was in your package. Uh, so you should have a memorandum of media all talks about our mission, statement, our core values, which we focus mainly on is professional police and service. And how that has encompass everything we do. Um, and then you see our core values listed there. Uh, there's a list of accomplishments, um, might have touched them all, you can read them. You'll see a focus on community business, engaging with partners with various community groups to be able to meet the needs of our community. Reduce fire crimes, traffic enforcement, uh, the region I use to have positive impact with our users. Um, you can see we, I will start a bit in last year. Um, what do they call that? I've been spent this year, which I mentioned last year, replacing body one cameras and in car camera. Uh, the one we had a layout date, batteries are down. Um, it's all nothing this profession now, that's a must. Uh, so accountability things, um, that's a bad, so we should have had them there and now it looks like this. I'm trying to find, you guys. Um, with, with the parents, the two brands that we're looking at in Motorola, which is what we currently have. And then Axon, uh, and that's a sticker shop.
Thanks, man.
Uh, I realize that's a big sticker shop. Uh, basically Motorola is, is a good camera. Uh, but it's, it's a camera. That's basically what we get from Axon is a totally different thing. Um, Axon, you get so many more features associated with it. Um, and you can see the bundle of what it includes in there. Uh, it's prepared by district attorney office, it links right into N C courts for, we have to jump a bunch of loops to take the Motorola version of it. And move it into courts, which kind of changes. So, so you get into court issues with Commissioner, in fact, I can speak of, um, he'd say, um, the, the artificial intelligence, A I parts are game changer. Um, when it comes to these cameras, um, one, you guys saw a live demonstration of this this week. It's live translation. So if we're dealing with Spanish speaking, um, citizen, we can push the button and what we say comes out of the camera in Spanish. What they say back to us comes back to us in English. So it's a game changer. Um, also with A I, it transcribes the entire interaction, uh, which really helps us with court. Um, because our detectives will spend a lot of hours and to watch the video and literally transcribe that fully courts. Uh, we're losing a lot of downtime, uh, related to that. Um, also, um, the report writing software, this thing will write the report for the officer. And it is so detailed that, um, we did a wear test of Axon and where the officer was having a problem with the printer in the cart, the paragraph. Stating the officer has problems with the printer in the car. That's how detailed this thing is. Um, it, um, has the awesome safety package. So anytime an officer makes any movement or draws a page or whatnot, everything comes on automatically. And it, it automatically backtracks sixty seconds. So apparently we're not missing anything. So they turn on the blue lights on the car, everything comes on, body one, everything. So, um, again, I know it's a sticker shop. Um, it's a ten year plan. Basically this will take the camera off the table for probably twelve, fifteen years actually, because we're guaranteed upgrades. But cameras, as we know, technology wise, every about three years, there's something new. Um, Motorola, we get no upgrades in five years, we're going to be back, right back here again. Um, it goes up about twenty five percent a year. Last year when we got the quote from Motorola, it was two forty something, we're at three seventy three a year later. So, um, in ten years, we're going to spend over a million or so irregardless. Uh, so the good thing about Axon, they're willing to do this ten year plan, really. Uh, and there's some other things related, like I said, Motorola makes a good camera, but it's just a camera. Um, and, uh, so all right, uh, I will do questions later. Uh, the next thing is the forty vehicles, um, the way we did a replacement plan and full vehicle of the year on a six year track. Um, now we will have some years where I'd add in the vehicle. So one year we may come up saying, well, only three this year, because we can drive our blog. I just want to make sure our patrol officer are in safety. Um, so when our fleet is getting, um, in better shape, uh, we need another good cycle on that to ensure that all the patrol officers have good vehicles. We bought three used vehicles from state surplus last year for our detectives. Um, we've all done hundreds of thousand miles on them already, but, um, they're not running up down the road every day like patrol officers are too. So, um, um, the next thing, and those two, the body one cameras and the patrol vehicle, we're in capital improvement plan already. We knew we were going to have to do this. So the next thing that I'm kind of looking at some retention pay incentive issues. Um, and you'll see, uh, the first was shift differential sorrows. All of them detectives, this is a common practice within the profession. Um, I mean, it's not just in law, in nursing and all, and these people that work nights, when they work that much, you know, they get an incentive. The, um, research and five percent is kind of the, the norm and that. Um, John ran some numbers, really, that cost us about forty thousand dollars to do this. Um, but I do think we work so hard to build our force back up. And the last thing we want to do is lose them to other people. You figure when we bring in an officer, by the time we get them trained and equipped, I mean, you know, you're looking at sixty seven thousand dollars reinvested in this person. Then they leave us a year or two later. Look at what we're losing, then we're back starting all over again. So, uh, uh, the next thing is field training also paid. Um, it's only when they're training somebody. When one officer takes on this responsibility, they're, they're taking on supervisory role at that point. Uh, and the liability of that person they're training. So I do think that we need to compensate them for that. Uh, what we're asking is two dollars an hour, just when they're training them. Uh, some agencies do it all the time, I'm not for that, because then you'll have people, you have to, you have to just get a parent. So, and, and we don't want to do that. And actually, other classes will be long forty hour class that they have to go to, to be certified, to, to be field trained on. Um, and I put paragraph in there where it talks about, we realize it's a raised in payroll expense, but we make it credit off of a more saving work. For the time productivity, higher productivity, less time and money spent recruiting will be, uh, will work this cost, uh, to the town. Um, the next thing on here was just some added things. It's, it's last year y'all proven to budget two position for narcotics detectives. Um, they're up and running, uh, some of the issues we've got, because they don't have some utility anything. Uh, it takes a lot of work to work up these cases. Um, and they need some technology to be able to do that. And that's what we've added here to budget. Uh, you'll see, uh, gray keys, um, essentials, um, that's a technology piece that they need. Um, we need to look at something, the undercover vehicle, um, when they're out doing surveillance, uh, they can't be in these patrol cars, because everybody knows who they're on. Um, and then some undercover surveillance equipment. Uh, having this equipment will allow them to better do their job. Um, they're working good now, but they're just, they're very limited in what they can do. But, um, the next thing was police department, building security. We've got some blind spots in our building. One is in the evidence room, which we do not want or need. But we need a camera in that room. Uh, the next one is the evidence processing room, the same thing. We have people dealing with money, we have people dealing with drugs. We need accountability with that. And that's what's in the beginning of the deal is what we don't have right now. Um, and there's some other blind spots and some other hot hallways that, um, and some other areas that I really feel like we need to vet the path of the candidate, you know. But, um, uh, that total cost was about twenty one thousand. Um, we've been working the job, we may have some money left over this year, we may have to do a few of these things, we're hoping. Um, the, you know, so we don't need to add this to budget. Uh, we're working together on that and we've got, um, you know, to see what we can do, some last hour money and some stuff we've got this year. All I have, I think it's your next segment. Let's see, she, you, you didn't have to ask my doctor, uh, probably didn't bring anything. Oh, I know. Uh, the last question y'all asked was, um, if we were going to ask for any additional, uh, personnel. Um, we put in for a grant with the governor's highway safety program for the two traffic laws. Um, we've seen our traffic crashing go up, versus when Wilkstein running twenty three to twenty five, employees in and out there, uh, on a regular basis. Um, so we're applying to this grant, we probably won't know anything to match. Uh, if we're going to get the grants, uh, if we don't get the grant, I'm not going to ask for anything this year. Um, we saw a four percent increase in calls for service last year, we ran a little nine or five hundred calls for service, so we're seeing them go up. Um, and we're tracking that. Um, but, you know, we, our stats look good, we're down in some categories. Uh, our traffic enforcement is up two hundred and twenty three percent, uh, from one of the years before, which, you know, when we go to media forums, we're going to be here. People speak, people run stops on, so we've got out working it.
Thank you. Mayor, you're next.
Yes.
All right, I'm cheating.
Good evening. Not one vote for you this year, I'm not asking for a fire crew. Okay. This year, a lot of our accomplishments we had was, um, moving our personnel around. We did some renovations in the station that these guys helped me do, like my office. We spent less than a thousand dollars, we moved my office, put the floor on, and painted it. Um, we were able to snag a couple desks and down here to bank before it got going. So I upgraded my office from nineteen sixty to now to at least nineteen eighty. We were able to do it in-house. Um, a rescue that you helped us get, it is fully in service. It is just shy of being certified as a heavy rescue through the state of North Carolina. So we'll work towards that every year, next coming years, buy some additional stuff. We did get a twenty one hundred dollar grant from Wool Speed for some rope rescue stuff. So it's fast, it's caravaners ropes for stuff out there as they're building at the heights they are. Our.
Our newest ladder truck will reach up to some spots, but to get people moving around, they did help us with that. And you got some stuff on that where we were able to do effective rescue. Um, our upgrades, like I said, we have our new management and that one rescue. As far as budget requests this year, our three one, uh, like John alluded to. The building renovation, getting started first with our sprinkler system, getting it in there where our guys can be sleeping in our fire station legally. With the good sprinkler system for them, and that's been a long time coming, we're we're asking for that. I'm asking for three additional personnel, one per shift. Now, these will be just regular firefighters, there'll be firefighter employees, not driver, these are just our normal code jockeys. That'll be a spree per shift, um, dry dock was a prime example, I had one of my career guys off, so we only had one working at home. So that way, if one of these guys are off, we still have a meeting of seven of two for everybody. So that that would help us out tremendously, and then we're requesting to replace our air and. Air compressor and SCV accelerator replacement, refill station in-house, not on the truck, and what we've had went with. The truck that went abandoned, but this will help us in here, and I did do a state matching grant this year to try to offset some of the cost of that. So if we get awarded that rest system, I think it was like twenty-six thousand, we would have to pay. So that would cut that down, but if we don't, at least it's everybody's issue. Um, you will notice on our lineups, uh. Biggest thing we've had this year upset would be the vehicle repairs. With our truck that they're getting older, our, we had a big hit this year on truck repairs this year. The only thing John and Jack might have thought about, the only way to get ahead of that curve is to start buying brand new trucks. And I know that is not feasible at the price they are right now. So we're, we're trying to bump that up, the repair costs this year coming, just trying to get ahead of the curve. Some of the stuff we had this year was a pump ship and a pump shaft, that was twenty-two thousand dollars in it show, and that's. That's like, the year before was bottom half of pump, this year we redid the top, so that truck should be good for a while, but um, the other big hit was. Hydraulic cylinders wasn't, I think that was about ten thousand. So that's that's somewhat jump up, but really our budget hasn't changed a lot, you can try to, just like everybody else, try to keep it online, it's about the weekend. So anything that you could do this year to help us, um. I guess you've already gone over the fire tax and that stuff, okay? And that's, that's about it for us.
I, thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, dude. There are next, I don't think so, thanks thirty, our operation, uh, part of budget, and um. Um, this has been quite a few things in the parks, Washington Park, Great Park, Ramsey G M, Ramsey Sound, I've seen a lot of. Park improvements courts, uh, that been added or included with. Uh, questions, part of the bowling, our bathroom, that's something the board mentioned, uh, communications, uh, increase our park maintenance, we've grown our goals. Um, and and of course, we've been increasing our funding for that, and then positive football for it, perhaps in car. There's a uh vacant, that a former basketball court, I understand, uh, near near South Sixth Avenue, that ends in parks, so that's that's fair. And then as far as employee changes, uh, Dylan, uh, spoke to me this time earlier about making transition plan, uh, buildings and grounds. Um, and this will be parks maintenance and apartment extension from the buildings and grounds later. And this would be the um. What we believe to improve our organizational efficiency by providing sort of one, one uh department rather than two or three departments. Um, and so in the budget, you'll see it being increased, the call of moving some of the 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 staff and maintenance. Uh, and things regarding parks, sort of following the grid down, but down in the parks. And then the staff is talking about what we call uh park staff focus on parks, parks renovation, uh, program, athletics. That'd be their key, uh, that that is most solid for, you need, uniform group, I should say, focus on maintenance and in brackets. There's all about.
Hi, thanks, sir.
Yes, uh, next is the breaking the B W, I'm not.
Hey, Mac. All right, thank you, Jack. The evening. All right, we bet, okay. All right, first thing I wanna do is, I just wanna read off our admission statement that we have here for our department, um. That is customer service and efficiency, build a visible, positive and collaborative presence in the community, guide development. And improve the quality of place of life for all, so. We've been really good, doing a lot of things uh right now behind the scenes, uh, but it's about to pop, so. Here are a couple of accomplishments that we have done and accomplished, we mean, I mean, for, uh, we've adopted a comprehensive and use plan. Uh, the second thing we're doing is we're actively pursuing, uh, actively drafting new U D O. Um, we're actively pursuing the North Carolina Main Street program. Uh, we opened a downtown welcome center, grand opening on April twenty-nine. And uh, this one, this one I'm particularly excited about, I threw this in here just to inform everybody about it, we're. Uh, me and my staff, we've been working on this uh side of city development tracker, which is a interactive web tool that we're gonna make as part of our website. Um, this tool is something that we see as a community engagement tool for the public, people will be able to get on our website. And just see what kind of developments popping up near their homes, on their commutes to work, where they live, um. Things like that, and they'll be able to just fool around on like the G I S tool, but you can just click on tab and it's interactive, they'll show you the, what's been approved, what. You know, they're in various phases of planning, so they'll have that update as well, so it's a pretty cool thing. Um, I'm looking to hopefully, once we get it, all the things worked out, hopefully presented to you and the public here in the next couple of months, um. After that, uh, we've got a whole bunch of grants, um, we got strapped, raised, um, even parted, but that's more closely associated with the parks and the rest of, um. So yeah, so that's what we have going on right now, um. Planning is is pretty simple, a lot of our stuff in our budget is either little small everyday stuff on advertising costs, or we have like big projects, big projects. There's really very few initiatives, so, um, what I have right now as far as our budget requests. Uh, big thing, North Carolina Main Street program, um. Right now, they did double the application cost, so it's not five thousand dollars, it's actually ten, um, so once we figure that in, plus. You know, obviously, where we're wanting to throw in for like programming cost, I would say maybe twenty, how much? Yeah, thirty-five, okay, okay, so, yeah, no big, no big jumps in that. And then the other one was adding the uh hiring a downtown coordinator, obviously, to to manage that.
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four.
Yeah, your budget's on page thirty-four.
Okay, thanks. Right for my. Um, mostly everything uh that we had last year is pretty consistent with this year. Uh, again, most of the stuff that we spend money on, um, outside of our big projects, like the U D O, Main Street stuff, it's mostly informed department supplies. Hostage, um, travel and training, uh, which will probably use more this year now that my staff is more settled into their roles, um. And then attorney's fees, we we use away quite a bit, um. See, other than that, really no other big changes, um. Yeah, looks good. And then, uh, I did have a a third request, which is a possibly a new vehicle, doesn't have to be new, uh, for a fact, but. Uh, I know that's a big one, but, you know, guys got X. Any questions? Okay, all right, well, that's right, thank you.
Mason is the finance director, John and Keith, we're gonna talk to him about the finance department, license plate agency. As where we as non-part now, you can get and transfer.
So I see now, um, the conference was there, uh, so. Top three priorities are, um, uh, the current woman in utility, uh, billing supervisor. Uh, retaining her in the finance department right now, she's paid out of thirty, uh. We, this was, it was an approved position several years ago, but when I got here, it wanted to fill, and I can cannibalize the, I'm sorry, that's a really bad word to say to people. But I could, I can steal their time when they're, when we work super busy collecting payments, I can steal three people's time, so why fill, why waste money? Not gonna be able to do that next year, so asking to retain that position for. To fill the 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 requirement that we have to do, and also for segregation due reasons, you don't want just me and another person in finance, that's, I'm not gonna do anything, but you know. Uh, uh, absorbing the full cost of the kind of software, we have a split between ten and thirty, because why not use very fast while we can? That, uh, we're, John, I've never realized a hundred percent of that, and uh, right now, the billing collection window, it's, um. It's still, it's there, but the uh, the question is going to down, uh, finally move downstairs. And uh, I think parks is down there right now, and to move them up, uh, take out the partition for where you make your payments and create four offices in that space.
Remember to talk about that on the. And, um, Mary, okay, we're gonna be talking about the office manager.
Um, everything else, certainly, I think you're over here, um. Uh, license plate agency, uh, saying year over year, uh. We've been able to, we started, uh, use that pre-decision, uh, we've, uh, left one vacant, uh, and finance staff out, but over there. They're typically really busy at the end of the month, uh, water, uh, water sewer building, I was very, it was busy, cutoff day, really busy cutoff day, and, um. Middle of the month when it's due, but any other time, basically, we we increased our revenue number transactions. With two full-time staffs as compared to the prior eleven months where we had three full-time staffs, so no changes in that, and. Uh, the license plate agency fund, uh, several years ago, was subsidized by the general fund by about thirty thousand, but, uh. Next year, this year, they sent sixty-five thousand to the general fund, and next year they'll send them, made a profit, basically they made a profit of sixty-five thousand this year. Then I'm actually off on next year, should make seventy-five thousand and send back to the general. Next, I have a amount for, uh, about non-part now and, um, debt transfers. Uh, so non-part now, we got our health insurance visitor back, our current health insurance plan, um, they dealt us that like, I think it's a hundred and twenty-five percent of expected benefit, and. In October, they reconciled it, so this, October twenty-four, we got a hundred and fifty thousand of credit back, so that's why our year to date is so much lower, and. The proposed two to twenty-six, that is the, uh, per the, uh, uh, plan and air number employees that the max will be able to spend. That could, in October, that may be a hundred thousand dollars less, but like, at this point in time, I don't know, I don't have capability of coming back. Uh, property liability insurance, just cut that to the same year over year, um. We're going through the renewal, we're gonna have to take out sixteen million dollars of insured values from water source, so separating it out. And once it gets into insurance, that's, that's even, that's real, that's, that's actually our area of math, I'm not gonna give that, but I just do the same year over year. It's likely left because there's more in terms of insured value, it's it's a comparable amount, so. Um, and then the next, the the, the next huge thing in that is, uh, ten-six-sixty, fifty-four-twenty-one, so the, uh. Fourth from the last and third from the bottom lines, uh, that is the Woolstee, Woolstee, uh, incentive payments. Uh, debt and transfers, uh, we paid off one of the, uh, we had a financing, uh, lease capital lease purchase, we paid that off in July this year, so. That's, that's the main reason why that's a decrease in debt, debt service. Uh, and also you can see, uh, this current year, we, uh, we're making transfers to, uh, the East Century sidewalk project and the North Second Avenue sidewalk project. Obviously, during that long time, so there's.
When you're late.
That may be the last thing. Okay, we're gonna start out with the gathering board budget, across our, I just will did about the history of our department for last year. Uh, so it's been almost a year that, um. I was promoted to assistant county manager and Johnson's, um, sorry about the position that I'm in, I'm his permanent. We made a lot of changes within the department, we went over HR director, really have a chart there, they're pretty on my duty better on administration. Um, I remain, um, town clerk, which, um, Rihanna's deputy clerk, that we were hoping. That was your last name, that she will leave in the town clerk position, and I will presume to be the deputy, um, July one. So they'll look over the memo and kind of tell you a little bit about what we've done and what our department does. Um, our biggest thing that we all do is we work hand in hand to ensure that policy is implemented. And all those will state federal laws and regulations that are out. Okay, so, we will go here. To start with the government, the government is page forty-three, I might have the word, but I'm gonna start with the government word, page forty-four. You will notice there's not a lot of changes. It's the other side, Governor Hotty. You'll notice where I've seen for our less money, you guys didn't spend as much money this year. So, um, nothing's really changed. The thirty-five hundred dollars just the travel and training programs, allow travel to go, to do training and classes and certain things. If you look at the reasons and descriptions, the sixteen thousand, you know, this has only spent four thousand one hundred and seventy-seven so far, that's the private and they not to pay. Yeah, and a big portion of that are, uh, North Carolina leading municipality dues, they run, what, John, about ninety-seven hundred?
Yeah, it's in the sweepstakes for ninety-five hundred.
Yeah, ninety-five hundred dollars, and that completes some different, um, memberships, like the National League of Cities, Mayor Association, and a couple other things. Okay, really nothing's changed with that. The election expansion, see, they gave us an average of eight thousand, not enough five hundred dollars, we didn't affect the overall budget. And then let's hop back to the town manager. The, the big enterprise studio will be, will be Saturday, you want to be back, you want to pay, so you will go over next. And then you will notice contracting services, really the only thing that I stand for this year in the town manager budget is for the NeoDove software. And if you go to flip back and you'll see the NeoDove, my core HR, my time attendant, I'm sorry, I have to stop looking, walking along. We already have the lead part of the NeoDove software, and that's the, I'm worrying the hiring portion, um, this government jobs dot com. So to add on the line, the time attendant, time attendant and core HR, it's a cost of an additional twelve thousand dollars a year for us. And that, um, eliminates a lot of different problems that we have. We've spoken, um, Chief Ray, he's a big proponent of this software, um, different departments. It cuts down on different, a lot of different things, and Ms. Nordvay has, um, had the opportunity to research it a little bit with me. And and we feel really good about it. All right, the last part of my regular budget is on the airport. With the airport, you can see a significant decrease that we're asking for. We have done trials, tribulations, I'm moving this in-house, and we have been successful. Uh, we're looking at, John, am I correct, about twenty-eight thousand dollar savings, twenty-eight thousand dollars savings just for the airport alone, but, um, having. Uh, buildings and ground staff, my, it takes our staff four hours to wait for that. We timed it, we done several, several times, is that correct, Dylan? Okay. All right, so you'll see, um, we're trying to, one thing that John and I have tried to do with the airport, it runs such a big debt. Our opinion, a large deficit, we've tried to bring that in with the airport still being able to run properly. Our opinion, a large deficit, we've tried to bring that in with the airport still being able to run properly, but we're looking at every beginning. We're looking at grants, we're looking at different, different avenues of income for us. So that's all I have right now for my regular budgets. So if you flip to the back, we're the blue part, the big boy. So last year, um the board, I'll be soon here, I decided it for John and I to implement a pay study. But you want to stay in there and develop this control. And so we use, we're gonna leave new to study next year. And we did the same exact pay study this year, um we based it on. Five thousand, nine thousand, and nine hundred and ninety-nine population, and then ten thousand and twenty-five thousand population. We have given you again a copy of that information from the North Carolina League in your book. So, and then on the front of that, you'll see the actual pay study. So what we did, again, we took those mid-end and mass averages of each population, we averaged it, and that's how we came up with our. New minimum. And you'll see we're in a really, really good place this year, there's two or three of us that um are not. Lastly. And I know I'm rushing, because we're doing, we're doing questions at the end, but if you look at the very last pages. At the book, you'll see the NCLM fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, anticipated, anticipated cost of living adjustments, whole lot. And merit increase survey results, we don't have to pay attention to the merit increase because we don't do that, this is a really good piece of information because it gives. The state, well, the state did, or is projecting for its top of living increase for um workers. And so we propose our. Pay whole lot increase based on these figures from the North Carolina League. So that's how all of these figures tie up together. So everything's a control, so we can go a step further, um the, the spreadsheet that there's, as you guys remember, last year was T V. So we felt this to give the summary, but if anybody could request a copy of how we got here. We can bring it the next time around. So, and this has been spot checked and verified, and um HR technician Deborah has um spot checked and verified the increases too. On that. Sorry.
Um I, I have two statements, a couple statements, actually, quickly. Um do you want to take a break before you next? On, we're continuing on now, this is seven o'clock, what's your pleasure?
I'm good.
Uh okay, now, I'm, I'm good, okay, the second question is, do you have a. Enough understanding of what you've been presented with tonight? Do you ask the questions that you, that you need to, to, or do you want to study this book? Uh, uh because I don't wanna keep going back and forth with the same questions once we leave here, because this is not our only budget session.
I, I just have some clarification questions, so I can adjust.
The right answer. Here's one, we can start and do that one, yeah, we'll start.
Um I know it's kind of a random season, but ceiling as places. Uh obviously, the roof is leaking, it's down in the butt, it's somewhere to, to, to do that.
The, the roof itself, uh the, like a, a roof renovation itself, that's, I think, I think we initially thought it was like a hundred and thirty-five, that is not currently in there, but what is in there is. Hold on, let me get to it, so uh park maintenance, as I stated earlier, it's fifty-two thousand nine hundred, uh it's broken out just. Let me see if there's one specific to, there's not anything specific to the roof, but in general repairs of ten thousand, I don't know how big that, I don't know. I don't know how big that repair is, is anybody, like, would that cover, would, would five thousand of patchwork kind of fix it? Okay, yeah, that, to repair that, that is budgeted for.
Okay, because if it's not fixed, it's happening, that's one.
It's gonna exponentially grow and be worse and worse and worse, yeah.
All right, my second question is, um looking at the recreation department, and I've already interviewed Mr. Jack. My thinking was when we went to ask, when we talked to people later, they had. When, when they also had a person that's responsible for clothing. So if the board would like to consider hiring someone that does this program, for not program for now. Because we have a lot of programs, and I don't feel like they get enough attention because the, the erect wreckers having to review the other ones. But that's, that's one thing that I would like for us to think about.
Yeah, I think we can think about that, because it's kind of old man with rhythm and maintenance. And the same goal of uh focusing on programming. Because that, that might have worked at the six-ten stage, we want programming.
We, we've got a lot of people that, you know, we'll have more on your involved in rent as, as our parks were, were owned and as we grew.
They're kind of in the vision, I heard.
So that's one, maybe could possibly look. But another thing that I'm looking at is kind of personal, um we had talked about the replacement of the water line remote funding. And for some reason, I said, well, let's put it off, we'll have to check. Well, my concern is, being that it's been about six or seven years in the making that we've had the money, and it hasn't been done. That if we put it off and let Sanford decide, and they're gonna do it, it may just not get paid with them. And I'm telling you, you cannot take a shower and run this one at the same time. So we have been done, I would like to see it get started before we turn everything over to Sam. That way it will be finished.
Really, put it back in Sam's tank. It's happening, it may be a way up.
Chris, Chris did some kind of part of that, last time you had. You were on.
But Chris knows we've had the money for father's decision as well, and we haven't been done.
And you put lockings on a capital proof thing, because that's the only place in there where that's still up. You can't do any flush toilet and laundry at the same time.
You have, you were on talking.
And I, and I, I was, uh, the dinner talk, and I, I mean, noted that, and I reached out to. Chris and Father, and we're gonna update him all the way to the park, there's a logging to advice. We shared a list of those about a month ago, and it was fact, it's showing, and I said, I do nothing, I'm gonna miss that, then Northland Avenue. Northland will benefit from a pressure increase in home labor. Once we make the pressure change, we will evaluate the impact in Northland, that's my last.
So that means it's not gonna get done, you're like, thanks.
I can follow over there.
Well, why, since we have, we have the money, why do we have to wait for them to happen with that weather all this time?
Remember this pressure increase study, are you finished?
Six years from now. That would be twelve years in the night.
Red was another street that was like Lynn that was on that list that was supposed to keep going.
So on uh, Red, he said, the pressure on North Street's avenue is gonna drop average then, he is. I guess it's um, he has like screws. Once, once home managers, Northland are resolved, we'll reevaluate it.
But it was supposed to come after Northland, but if, if you keep kicking Northland down, you don't kick the end of it or something.
It was not, I don't think it was, but we're the only place that has a tool that's fine.
I, I think part of the problem here is the wrong people are having the wrong conversations, and the right people are not asking the questions. Uh I, I think at some point, um Sanford and this board has come together to get these answers direct. Uh and also to get some of this work done, as you stated, we've had the money, the money's been here, and we did not do what we should have done with it. Uh and so I think it's really probably time for the board to take a little bit of horns and get the right answers. So that, you know, you keep pushing it back and you get out of those. So we need that, and I do have mixed numbers, so I'm gonna be calling them uh to have set that up, and if anybody else on the board would like to sit down. With them, Tribe River was here today, I was not a party to that, that meeting, uh but I mean, they were in the building. And we got here once before, the same way, with not knowing what's going on, and we're back almost in the same spot.
Well, if I, if I can remember right, of course, I don't remember the thing clearly, but I thought that we all agreed, and I remember that it was to be fixed.
We did agree.
And I felt like that was supposed to be immediate.
You agree.
So we will have, so we will have some people present at the Monday night meeting from Tribe, but I'll ever, that this might be a good application.
We could put Northland and Redo calling up the number.
Mike and Gotta Be here.
But they may tell me the same thing I have heard.
Right.
For years, and what, how are we gonna help them accountable once this turns out? There, I mean, how are we going to say, okay, well, you talked to us this, well, you know, you have a lot of this bureaucracy, that is fine. So we can say, oh, well, Sanford says they're gonna do this, we're gonna fix this, and then, well, all of a sudden, you know, we, it's complicated.
It goes back to the, the people there that's in charge can have that conversation, you know. I think we've done a seventy-year-long service by not establishing that relationship early on, but we were kept away from it, and now we're still in this kind of condition. So until we have that direct, you. The, the decision maker.
Well, the people that are suffering from this are kind of frustrated. Because they're paying the same amount of bill each month that everybody else has got good water pressures paying. And they're like, what can we do, what can we do?
Well, I, I think they're giving you solutions, it's the only one available to us right now.
But I'm just saying, they're one.
And I do understand the frustration, because there's, just across the board, there's really talking with them. And uh, and, and the problem people I make is just that, that can give you an ass. Now.
Did Chris, or Kirk, you know, who, who figured as an estimate for that, like specifically, what was it?
We, we, so in November, we did the, we did the three budgets for those uh, those three projects. Uh and I believe in the, in the January meeting, I think he said one's gonna start in. You got it?
Northland was a hundred and eighty thousand, very soon it'll come back.
And we did a, we did a budget amendment.
Yeah, we did a budget amendment, which basically meant, okay, we have the money for it, but no contracts were signed or anything, and that, this was subsequent to the merger being signed, so effectively. Silver City has no control at this point, but uh, but when Chris gave his update in January, I've. I wanna say he's, it was July twenty twenty-five, and I don't know if that was a.
That's right.
But we ended the budget then, and I thought, all right, this is gonna get done.
Well, that's what we all thought.
It, it, it was subsequent to the, the merger agreement, which basically means that, okay, you guys approved it, but really, we've signed the merger agreement that said, hey. Sanford own, Sanford will own all the stuff, so any decision we made between that point and the point we transfer over, Sanford has to okay that, because, like, we can't. We can't just sis, uh make a ten million dollar check tomorrow, even if we had ten million dollars, because in three months, we're gonna give it to, away to somebody else, I mean, they have to approve.
I can't see them objecting to us using our money to repair the lines.
That was exactly the conversation that happened too, because why would they object?
Because there's bigger, there's. Because there's other uh more pressing contract, uh there's other, there's a seventy million dollar project that's going on that, there was just an increase of, like. I, I forget how, how much it was, but there's other increases, and there's, and I don't wanna speak for them, I don't, I don't know, but there might be one that affects. A thousand people, that, okay, that's a bit, that's a higher priority, and that's a decision they have to make, but effectively, Silver City doesn't have, Silver City signed a merger agreement, we. We don't really have anything to hold them to the fire for.
We allocated funds for this particular expenses. Can we not just expedite it quickly, we already have the money set to the side, get a contractor, get it done in the next couple of months, is that not feasible?
And we also signed a management agreement with them as well, prior to the merger.
Oh, back in November.
Yeah, so like, oh, so say, so say we have that money, and like, I, I can't, I can't oversee a water sewer project, and Chris is gonna be a Tribe River Water employee in a couple of cells.
The implication of the management agreement related to.
The management agreement is the preamble to the um, the merger agreement, so what do we have to enter in the management agreement? In order for the state to give us the state appropriation of this, of the money, they were not gonna give us.
Camera this out and get it done, because going back to Commissioner, it makes no sense for you not to read, to read that, that you're not gonna pay.
So maybe we should get, like, we've been starting with the counting, maybe we should get a joint board meeting with Sanford and say. We, we will pay for this, it's not out of your pocket, let us go ahead, we found the key to the phone, let us go.
It is out of their pockets, because any remaining thirty, thirty fund dollars goes to them, so we're spending, we're effectively spending their money in a way that we want to, not necessarily the ultimate owner of that money wants to.
Yeah, it's good to sit down.
Oh, yeah, no, I, I'm not saying that's, that's not required, I'm just saying that, can't.
I think we, we approved it in October, and it comes back some product, something that's in the.
Next question.
Hello, Bill, this is, uh, of course, I thought we, we had a ready to do. That was gonna be one of my questions. Well, uh, we, uh, we, we weren't back, seem like we weren't back. This, this is my um confusion. We had a contract, we paid way more than what it was originally stated, he reached a contract, now having to have to do more repairs, so. Is any of these current things that we're looking at, is any of it arguably covered under the old contract? And if so, can we pursue? Litigation with the. Contact with a function. Oh, we paid a million dollars about two years ago to renovate this building. And it was supposed to include a lot, I don't know everything was supposed to include, but I do know now, about two years later. We're having to fix a bunch of stuff, it seems like it possibly should have been in there.
So, so there was money in the budget um last year, not, not the budget you're wearing, but there was money in the, the year before to put windows in this building, and it was not used.
Well, but I'm talking about the contract.
Not that I'm aware of, I think.
When Roy was here, it was Roy.
I think it was um, when Roy was here, the, um, there were, there was the budget. Pardon me, um, windows were supposedly a part of the contract.
Right.
And um Roy, or I don't wanna speak out of turn or anything, or.
I don't think, like.
And that was one of the.
They see in the, in the.
Common area got hosed, as well as the windows.
But I, I'd like to look at, go back and look at that, we're still with their, through your statute limitations on that contract. Uh, and to see, I mean, if we acted this on us, but if we didn't act it, it wasn't done. And we paid for it, that's not on us.
So John and I thought that, um, you know, let's, let's say that, I've, I've been told multiple times that um the window portion was asked. So I don't know, I can go back and try to find um a historical data on that, um, yeah. Yeah, the facade is rotten, um. The facade, the, the facade, and the.
There, there was something where he was fixing a hole, and there was a leak, it was coming down. My, my, my recollection is that all that is supposed to be fixed out there with that leak. I don't know, I think, I, I was kind of, we need full contact. See what we asked, see what's going on before special limitations. Listen, we have a ton of the invasion. That was supposed to fix.
Yeah.
That was supposed to fix.
Was that a room on the front side of the building?
No, that's in the back.
Yes, really.
The, the brand new freshly, the brand new freshly painted bathroom in HR is. Don't have to be sanded down and repainted, because when it rains, it comes back in the window. It comes back in the window. Yes, sir. And, um, so there's certain, you know, it's, uh, Jack will tell you, I get kinda. When I look at things, I'm like, why don't we do this and not do this, this was more important to the structure of the building. Um, but anyway, we know for a fact, we've had two different, um, gutter contractors come out that do commercial gutters. We don't have enough gutter on this building.
Can y'all just look at it?
Yeah.
Cause I, I, I did your rumors, some stuff was pulled, and I was scratching.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But we can look at that, we'll, we'll do some research.
And those are terrible not explicitly online, right? Yes, in your budget.
It's under buildings and ground now, it's.
I just, um, really thank everybody for all the information that they give, and I'm ready to report at the same, so that I. Kind of knew what it was that people were wanting to ask for, um. And I know that, um. I'm just thinking about the police chief and his, um, his. Almost two million dollars. But I'm also thinking about safety, uh, and what it would be, and just looking at the comparison of five year, ten year, and all of the things that. That can do with, um. Which I like. Uh, but, you know, I know it, it's, it's going to take a lot, but I just wanted to thank everybody though for your preparation and everything.
So, um, Albert, thank you for asking a question on the contract, I crossed it off my list. On the, based on, we used to get a list of cities that seemed have, have been repaid. It didn't really match us, so that's out, that's all new, we gotta leave these powers.
My class, yeah, yes, sir, you have a control.
Do that. On the. Fire and police, uh, just a comment. Personally, we have, you know, to protect our people, if anybody wants to talk to me. From, cause I'm gonna cut on other side of evidentiary perspective, of how. And why I feel it's needed, um, I mean, having had a conversation, there are costs. That are not discussed in this memo, that can be incurred. You know, when defense attorneys start filing motions about how you capture this. Um, and we're known to do that. So, if, um, I, I definitely think we need, we need to act on it for multiple reasons, but it's probably not a conversation for now, but. If anybody wants to call, I can kind of go to it, from an evidentiary, defense attorney perspective. Of, um, why I made my job a lot harder, but.
And, and I didn't talk to them.
But it is, it is something, I think.
The Axon system, is that, that accounts like to that almost quarter million increase of police budget, and is that gonna be a debt service?
A sizable, uh, sizable chunk, so I think, and the numbers changed a couple, a little bit, but I think it was, uh, one point, uh. One point seven five over ten years paid in equal installments.
Okay.
And I think the Motorola was four hundred, and in five years, we would have to buy another set of those.
Yes, sir. There's no upgrades with Motorola.
Yeah.
And you're looking at about three years, they're gonna come out with something new. Uh, and with a twenty five cent increase in years, you can see where that cost is gonna go up, um.
We're paying about three or four hundred thousand dollars of interest on that system.
Uh, I think it's a, I think it's a greater system, I, uh, I'm, I'm sorry, I think it's a greater system, I think the way, the way I at least looked at it was. It's four hundred thousand today, and then it's, it, in five years, we're gonna have to buy it again, and it's probably gonna, it, it'll probably be doubled. So it would be one point two million over ten years versus one point seven over ten years, is the way, at, is that a fair way to estimate that?
And one part of this, also it's not in there, Motorola, we work off a server. So our server that we currently have, and that fills up, I don't know, that's not incurred in this cost, Motorola. Uh, with Axon working off a cloud base, so we don't have those server issues on the backside, so.
I think it would really decrease liability.
Well, that's, that's another issue too, I mean, in addition to preserving the safety, because. It's the preferred method with the DA, it, it makes for a smooth solid case that we can't chip away at. Um, which is, you know, that's what we try to do, we try to chip away.
We all have our job.
Yeah, in addition, if you maintain public safety by increasing the integrity of the case. This system more than pays for itself by the emphasis on lawsuit. One lawsuit is gonna be way more than the cost.
And the AIP also had a review feature, so we can put trigger word in the system, facial slurs, profanity. And that system will catch those, and that doesn't say who says them, but it will red flag, send a supervisor an email. That tells them to view that video. Uh, you know, one thing we, we tried to do was go back and, and, you know, review video the best we can. Uh, but sometimes we miss things, this system, you can put in all different triggers in that AI tech.
And the translation services, you can, you combine it with volume on canvas. And. We, we're, the police protected, the citizen protected, they're protected.
It also has GPS built into it, so we can see where, you know, we have a GPS feature in the car, which tells us where the car is. But when that officer leaves that car, we don't have any, so this Axon has a GPS feature, and so we can track that camera. As long as that camera's on that, on that.
And the camera is triggered when the firearms are moved from the holster, that's.
It's, it's, it's an office safety aspect of it, if they pull their taser or make any certain, if they fall down, the camera kicks off. It has all these features built into it, it automatically turns that camera on.
About the badging needed, was that specifically for the evidence room, so y'all have, y'all have problems like, um?
We, we've got the evidence room badge, um, we'll swipe it already. Uh, we've got some issues upstairs with the bulk after our drive room for the evidence, we need to swipe that. Um, also where we keep all our firearms and ammunition and all that, we need to, to swipe badge it out, so we can know who's going in and out of that.
Put us track.
Yes.
Okay. After the, uh, fire connect, what, what did you say, uh, do you think? Yeah, what we need to do.
We will say, well, the county, the county was to go nine, never the neutral.
Uh, the, the county urged it, but really, they were just asking for the various departments to just give justification if they, they keep at that, and our justification for that is gonna be. Hey, there's three, there's three full time positions that, that, that's why we're staying at twelve. Yeah, yeah, yeah. At twelve, but as we look, as we look towards, hey, are we gonna build a second fire station, we're gonna have to go up to fifteen at some point in the next three years. And that'll just be, that won't be in town residents, that'll be, um, that'll be people in the central town fire district.
Mr. That is fifteen cents going, look, it'd be easy to sell to the fire district people. Because it's going that way, where they're at a class ten, fire insurance rating, and we'll drop them to a four.
Okay.
And the fifteens are maximum as a fire tax, now if you, if at some point you wanna go to a service district. A lot in Randolph have done that, you can go as high as you want.
Twelve will get you a free spot.
Twelve will get us free spots, and I, I forgot to mention two of it. Out of that, we're gonna try to promote within three to make shift captains on each shift, so it'd be like a sergeant on each shift.
Okay. All right. Another question is, uh, my friend Tanner. To do all the things we need to do, when they need to be done, what does our tax rate need to look?
Uh, so say you're just like, this is great, this is passed, uh, it's at fifty four, we're forty, forty one thousand dollars to the good. Um, if, if we moved it to fifty one and a half cents, we'd be about a hundred eighty three thousand, uh, to the bad. If we moved it to forty cents, we'd be about one point two million dollars to the bad. If we moved it to twenty seven cents, we'd be about two point four million dollars to the bad. Fifty four, yeah, like, if, if there is some desire for something else, uh, it ca- it can absolutely be lower. Uh, part of that is also, um, the figures that we have for the total assessed valuation is. Is just what, what the tax office appraiser came out, not necessarily what's actually going to be, because like. Uh, I don't, I forgot what your evaluation was exactly, but like, let's say, let's say the tax office valued your home at two fifty, and you really disagree. You're going to, you're gonna fight that valuation, and it's probably pretty, you'll probably be pretty successful and get. Ten, fifteen, twenty thousand dollars lopped off your valuation, and we won't know what those figures are until August, so if we do say a revenue neutral at forty. Because, okay, we think this is the total valuation, and then, but there's like a five percent drop just from people arguing and successfully arguing in their case. Then, then we're not revenue neutral, we're actually at a five, five percent deficit.
All right.
Yeah, fifty four will cover everything that was presented tonight.
Fifty, so John, the, the revenue is generally from real estate increased by three hundred and five million.
Uh, correct, uh, uh, port, and I didn't show this, cause it's just kind of, uh, it's. It gets into a lot of, but a large, a large, uh, portion of that increase is just Woolspies valuation went from. Virtually nothing to five hundred million, and we have to send ninety five percent of that, that, that to them, so we're not. Keep, we're not really, yes, our revenue increased that much, but like, we're, we're immediately sending, yeah, yeah.
All my questions are served, so I won't take up more time, um, I'll probably give y'all a call. Um, I just had a couple of comments, um, I really enjoy reading the accomplishments of each department. Uh, I really know, um, put things in perspective for the over the last year, and several of us have been in office a little over a year. Um, I think it speaks to, you know, the work of the departments and department heads, so thank you, God, for all your hard work. Um, I really appreciate also how they're asked to tie it back to our strategic goals. Um, and our, and our vision for the time of Siler City, that makes it, um, a lot easier to. Connect, um, needs with, um, with outcome, so. Good job, everybody, I think this budget process was, uh. It was better than last week. Just a little bit, so I, I personally, I'm gonna take this home and digest it a little bit, uh, there, there may be questions that come from that, but. All right, now, good job. That's great, I mean, it, it, last year, we didn't have. Now we have, before we have expenditures, we have revenues, we don't, actually, we just like, you know.
Alright, that's my bit, I guess, I don't know, while it's out here. We, in the last meeting, or the meeting prior to that, we talked about stormwater and how we would tackle that. And we basically said that we would try to make sure that. Our, uh, guys had the equipment, to make sure that they were able to alleviate that, so we did not impose. That stormwater being. It's gonna be absolutely impossible for them to do buildings and grounds, and take care of, of. What needs to be done with that stormwater. And the reason I say this, we started talking about this months ago, Mr. Pugh came in here last year. Talking about the ditches. We can't find five ditches that's been cleaned. So. So basically, what I'm saying is, until we see some real movement. On these ditches being clogged, the, the coverage being unstopped. It doesn't make any sense to put these two partners together. Now, one, the, you can have a buildings and grounds department, and we still got Garden Talk Street. That sits there a couple of weeks. This is not a knock on that department, this is an observation. And we see this. So we need to really think about how combining the two of those is actually gonna affect. Because that's gonna double the load. And then I get into that. Well.
Well, so what about parks, so I mean, it makes sense that parks, that, that should be folded into at least one of the other two. That way, like Cindy was saying, they can focus on programming, it doesn't make any sense for parks to be doing repairs, like handy repairs and stuff.
Buildings and grounds, basically, if you think about the municipal amount. That is actually done, one of the one is an apartment that concentrates on exactly what it's supposed to be doing. And what I, I, I'm slightly surprised. And the ditches have not been cleaned. And last year, we, we had, we had a town hall, first town hall that we had, one of the complaints was, there was still leaves on the ground. I don't, I just don't wanna overburden that particular department with other work. If we finally have a buildings and grounds department. That took, I just heard that it's taken now, what, three hours to do that for? Boy, where's that person coming from?
Where, where?
Coming out of a, that used to be inside of Parks and Rec.
So maybe we can. So maybe we can look at. The ways to, cause if, if you're bringing more work into a department, then maybe we can look at. How we accomplish that more work through technology. Possibly more sad, independent contractors and or better, um. More efficient, uh, scheduling.
Yeah.
Because you're, you're gonna bring more work in.
Yeah, and so that's.
So that's what I was thinking, is you, even though you have to restructure. How, how it's done, I, I can see, even if they fall under the big umbrella. There's still gonna be different pockets of, you have your, your, your buildings and grounds. You have buildings and grounds which incorporate the, the parks and recreation and all of that, then you have your. Your people that fall under your, your streets and, and all of that, but. I guess finding out how many people are in each department, and then making sure that. You know, if there's, if there's somebody who is making sure that things are being done, and I think it's. I think it's possible, it's just to get the structure right, and making sure that how it's organized. And following, and keeping up, and monitoring the people who are supposed to be doing what they're supposed to do. Um, I think it's possible, it's just looking at the, the structure, and if it does seem like it's, it's. Overwhelming, then look at it, so maybe there's a possibility of bringing back some information about how. With structure, I think that would be, that would at least give us some information to determine. You know, with how, how the stormwater can be adjusted, uh. Be, uh, look at how the, you know, the ditches and all of that, just thinking about what it is. And if we can see what, what a structure would look like.
And to expand on that, structure and scheduling, cause some things, uh, seems like.
Right, that's true. And I, and I do agree, but my point is, it's not already getting done.
Right, and that's why I was saying.
And, and that's my point, is, you know, we, we waited for this, this stuff to get done, and it hadn't been done.
Well, it's the same, what's not getting done, Dylan, what do you need for clean ditches, though, how do you do that?
So we have an older mini X, and that's all we requested the feedback of, and older, and older mini excavator, cause it's all. And that's what we have been using since I've gotten here, the backhoe is going to. Expand all that.
That's a passion, B.
Yes, sir.
I trust Jack in the back. Put together for us, they know what they're doing.
And we have been working on that, um.
We, we've been there for many dishes where everything, um right now, we're getting heavy into bowling season. So we try to knock a bowling out, and then we're able to address. It's, we try to be proactive about it, and get out ahead of dark rainstorms, and find these areas, and mark them up, put them all this, and hit them.
When, when you're, when you're looking at structure and scheduling, and I know this might mean they're getting. But can you please factor somewhere in there, cleaning out these droids?
Yes, sir.
Get the leaf truck.
Hey, I, and I took care of your brains. Go ahead and redo our accomplishments. Yeah, so we have a, we have a lot.
And we've, and we've worked, Dylan and I have been um working really hard on time management, um time management, seeing what the people do. Um go to New York art and stuff, and really, I'm not just talking about it, getting the people out there and trying it. Um trial and tribulation, and uh like I said, several weeks, um several weeks, wouldn't say Dylan.
Dylan, does building grounds have an employee who like services hydraulic equipment and diesel engines? You know, setting mechanics who have that skill set?
So garage does, um you know, building grounds position specifically. Him as a person, he also has that ability.
Just bring it up, cause I don't know if it's necessary if that equipment is new. Would it make sense if I, you, I mean, these, these pieces of equipment last decades, if they're well maintained, and we, we got someone who takes them, does it have sense to spend about fifty? Or maybe we could spend half that and get a, a, gently use one, I mean, do these things depreciate as bad as a car, or like? They don't, cause okay, that makes sense.
I mean, they depreciate, but not what not.
No, we're here with the car does, I mean, maybe we should entertain buying a used backhoe.
Hours, hour meter on those switching. And it calculates how many hours they can switch, if whether or not what, what's the value. That's it.
We got two, two, what seconds did it? One of those, two, or which one's better?
That's not next week, it's the weekend.
Some stuff actually, now in between, we'll have our money leaving, so then we could ask them, call, I think we're on about, something, somebody.
And I know make the fifteenth, I don't wanna hold it up, but I'm just. I mean, if there's stuff out there, I got some trials.
Place holder on back, so we said the fifteenth was solid, and then um the fifteenth. And then we could decide if we wanna keep the seventeenth. We're doing the seventh, which is that Monday.
Yeah, yeah, so we're getting some on Monday.